Check my notice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who's talking?
Where is that?
Is your mic on?
It is.
You're in the mic.
Speak into it.
I did.
Can you hear him?
Call the meeting to order. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Perick.
Yes.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Mr. Willins.
Here.
We also have with us tonight the board attorney, Mr. King.
Present.
The board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
And the board engineer, Mr. Holloway.
Here.
Can I restand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, does anybody have any business before this board that's not on tonight's agenda? I see none. Can we have a minute who are supposed to deal with?
The next meeting.
I'm sorry?
I thought we got minutes in that email, so I thought...
No, I was going to put it on the following meeting.
All right.
Give people enough time to read it.
So I guess we gotta start. The first item on the agenda is Devin Cavallari.
No, they've been carried.
There's no resolution.
So you raise your right hand. You swear, swear, affirm the testimony you're about to give before the board's truth to help you, God?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Devin Cavallari E.T.V.I.N.C.A.V.A.L.
And you're the owner of the subject property? Okay, thank you. You can have a seat and just please speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Why do we carry this? Why do we carry this?
Because he had to bring back some additional information.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
Was that what, did we take any testimony last time?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, well, just to review. You need a variance to legalize river rock around the pool patio between the house and walkway.
Correct.
And the biggest thing is your impervious coverage is growing from forty-two percent to forty-eight percent. Your previous application, two thousand and eighteen. I guess for the record, why don't you explain a little bit about what is your, you're asking us to, what you do?
Uh, river rock along the, from the perimeter of the property, around some art scape thing that was put in, um, along the edge of the house, around the air conditioning units. Um, so that was the...
Can you speak into the mic, please?
That was the basis of the, the variance for the request here.
Can you explain to me a little bit what river rock is? Cause I'm...
About this size, uh, larger style rocks, I guess, maybe look smooth rocks, right, from erosion from the river, I guess.
Does a lot of the water filter through or...
Yes.
Yes.
You're not sitting on concrete?
No, no, it's on, uh, it's on dirt.
Did you, did you meet with your neighbor at all?
Did I meet with the neighbor, talk about the problem?
Yes.
No.
And the reason you didn't?
Well, we, we, we talked about the problem when it was brought up, but it was, uh, it is very difficult to talk to about, about the problem, so it's, uh, not very productive.
Is he here tonight?
Doesn't look like it.
Is there anyone here in the matter of, uh, case nineteen forty-one?
Six Elway Road? Doesn't appear to be.
And you have a letter from Mr. Lizer kind of addressing the subject. He accused the...
Correct.
Decorative river rock would, would only help stormwater runoff.
Correct.
And the issue of whether or not there was funding with previous, uh, you can't conclude one way or the other, other than he mentions that, I guess yourself spoke to him, what you had done.
Yeah, we spoke several times over the course of this, uh, issue.
Tell me your perception of why you were asked to come back?
Uh, because he's made complaints and, uh, what's that?
Complaints from?
Neighbors. He, why am I here, the question was?
What's he complaining about?
I don't remember.
He's complaining that...
There was drainage issues.
There was drainage issues that I caused.
And is that why you put in the additional river stone?
So at what, no, river stone was put in, uh, when the town engineers came out to inspect the issue, um, I guess they noticed the river rock, they researched it, I, I presume, and then they said that that was not part of my initial, uh, variance, which, you know, I had the patio and at the time I didn't realize that was, uh, impervious coverage. It didn't occur to me that would be impervious coverage, so it was in violation and was, I either had to come back with a variance or remove the stone and put mulch or something.
Well, you had a combination. You had a neighbor complaint.
Well, neighbor complaint, and that's what, they came out.
Yeah.
And I guess they had to do something.
And you put, look, uh, not impervious, you put river rock down where it didn't show on your garbage plan.
Correct.
So what was that? So were they inspecting? Wasn't according to the plan, they were right?
Right.
Okay. And I, I believe, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, at that time, he didn't have any expert witness, uh, to testify that, in fact, that river rock would be not in, increasing the impervious coverage. That's why we asked him to come back or have the township engineer give us the information. Is that correct?
Did we ever do?
Well, no, excuse me. In that, is that, was that your understanding also?
My understanding, last time I was here, the, uh, neighbor had claimed he did not receive notification.
Right.
Although, although he did, and there was evidence of that.
We're not here to hear that. We're here to hear the case, okay?
Yep.
So the reason you had to come back is because your neighbor said he didn't get notification, okay? That was one issue.
That was one issue.
The other issue was your original approval, when the inspector came out, you had put stone in an area that wasn't previously approved.
Right.
And they thought that that was more impervious coverage than you were approved for. Now the engineers indicated that the stone you put down is not really impervious coverage because water goes through it. Is that correct, Mr. Chadwick? Aren't you reading? Okay. Yeah, he also, I think he opined that it probably slows water runoff down. Yeah. So you, you've responded to the complaint and to the request for additional or professional information, which didn't allow this board to approve your application on your first visit. Your objector is not here tonight, so I think you've for my satisfaction done what we're asked to do.
Well, just looking at the engineer's report, it was his opinion that decorative river rock could only help with the stormwater runoff, not exacerbate the runoff, as long as the river rock was constructed without an impervious base. Your river rock does not have an impervious base, correct?
No.
So underneath the river rock is soil.
Soil, there's a, there's a mesh for the weeds, but it's, it, uh, allows water...
Mesh allows the water to go through.
Correct. I think Davey said it very succinctly.
Do you want to ask for a motion?
Well, does anybody have any questions of this witness? Anybody have anything they want to add to this case in favor of or opposing it? I see none. Uh, anybody want to make a statement or just have a motion to...
Yeah, I'd like to just, just clear it up. The impervious coverage now, so it remains the same, like we said forty-eight point seventy-six, it's not going to be forty-eight point seventy-six. We are not increasing the impervious coverage.
I think we are.
We are increasing.
No.
No, we are not.
Engineers testified that it is not impervious.
So the impervious coverage remains forty-two point oh-two.
Well, so we, we have to, don't...
But how is it?
So what do we have to...
What you're doing is you're giving a variance for the forty-eight percent so that the site plan shows the rock, uh, but what the, uh, engineer's opinion is, is that the rock is gonna, as, uh, Mr. Berkowitz stated on the record, is gonna help, uh, the, um, flow of water and also it's going to allow for, um, water to drain through it, somewhat like the pavers, um, in, in patios, it allows water to go through. But is that the only issue when it comes to impervious coverage? Is the water aspect of it?
Yeah. The township ordinance doesn't differentiate between like the pavers where the water can go through, or in this case, the decorative rock. It just says it's hard surface and it is, so it's a coverage.
Okay.
So you have a disconnect between engineering fact and zoning.
Right, I, I, the way I think I ordered this read is any coverage...
Right.
Is assumed to be impervious unless it's shown otherwise.
Unless it could be shown other, which it has been.
So...
Okay.
So I guess we're approving the coverage that's there.
Right. Which is the forty-eight percent from the forty-two percent.
Right, yes.
Okay.
So that's, I guess, an interesting point, if I were to go for another variance and it was impervious coverage.
Say again?
But if I was to go for another variance for something else...
I would recommend that right now for impervious coverage.
I, I, trust me, I, I don't want to.
I, I think you take your chips and run on this one.
Yeah, I agree. I just try...
Look for another day.
I understand.
Understand.
You got a motion?
Someone.
Well, you want to frame it?
Make it?
Motion to...
Uh, do you want me to do it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, who are we at? Application nineteen, uh, column forty-one, Devin Cavallari, six Elway Road, block one sixty-six, lot seventy-one, zone R three, recommend granting a C variance to legalize river rock around the pool patio and between house and walkway contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns eight, nine, and thirteen.
Second.
Call roll.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan.
Yes.
Mr. Perick.
Yes.
Mr. Reddy.
Yes.
Mr. Willins.
Yes.
Approved.
All right, uh, your question granted, the motion, we put it to resolution, it will be voted on formally in two weeks.
He'll be, he can pick it up, right?
It will be mailed to him.
You'll be off, you'll be mailed?
Nor the next day.
Within a couple of days.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. Um, I guess that brings us to Ji Wang, Ten Tenville Road.
Who's gonna provide, are you gonna provide the testimony, sir?
Yes.
Okay, raise your right hand.
Record.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before the court, before the board is the truth to help you, God?
Yeah.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name? And you're the owner of the subject property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. You may sit, uh, have a seat and, um, please speak into the mic.
All right, Mr. Wang, here's our...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we get into a discussion of the appearance of this application, we had asked him to, uh, present this case to the township engineer. We have a letter from him dated December nineteenth.
Look, I, I read it online, I haven't, I'm, I'm not seeing it here.
There's a newer one dated March fourth.
March fourth.
I just got it today. This is a copy for you.
I have the email.
For March fourth?
Yes.
This one really says the township engineer is not going to be the engineer for the applicant.
Can I read it? And the, I don't think the applicant has an engineer, I didn't see any engineer report, do you, sir?
No, I don't have an engineer report, because the engineer, engineer report based on last hearing, actually based on the, the first hearing that was held on October twenty-third, twenty nineteen, which is next year. The conclusion of the first hearing was require town, uh, order two things. One is the code enforcement officer, uh, to be here, uh, in the, in the next hearing. The second one was required the town engineer, um, have a report, uh, to see if the expansion of the, the patio will actually, uh, affect the neighbors, uh, the, I mean, the, the, the water, uh, runoff problems. Um, so that was the first, that was the, the orders by the first hearing. And the hearing was rescheduled to December eighteenth last year. And that day, when I came here, both orders was not fulfilled because the code enforcement officer was not here and the engineer report was not here. So that being said, in that meeting, that's rescheduled to today, I, I repeatedly asked me, I asked them, do I need to do anything? The answer is not necessary, but if I could do simultaneously with contact the town engineer, that will be very helpful on the, on the process, which is I did. So I, I emailed to, uh, the town engineer, Mr. Lizer, and also referred to, uh, Mr. Paul Nihoff. Uh, Nihoff. And, um, I had a phone call with Mr. Nihoff on, uh, on February sixth. And, uh, so Mr. Nihoff come to my house and look at the expansion of the patio and testify, I testify saying, you know, the, in that situation, he cannot tell whether this will cause that problem because he had no idea about before and after. And after that, I have not received anything from the town engineer until dated mail, February twentieth, uh, February twenty-sixth this year, I received the first letter from Mr. Lizer, which is dated, um, December nineteenth, which is the next day from the last hearing. Um, but, you know, the post it is February twenty-sixth and I actually, I read it on March first. And in this letter, obviously there's a misand, me, big misunderstanding there, saying, um, I have new request of new two thousand, additional two thousand square feet of, uh, uh, building, which is, that's not the true, that we never have the new request. But I thought, uh, when I see the date, which is December nineteenth, I thought, you know, that was too early and also I met, uh, Ms. Nihoff after that, so I wasn't too worried about this letter. Until today, I see by email that I have printed out from Mr. Nihoff stating, um, that, you can read the letter, like existing unpermitted patio expansion and newly requesting impervious coverage expansion, uh, there's no request.
That letter is dated what?
This letter dated today.
That's the new one?
Yeah, new one, dated today. And...
Where are you reading in the letter?
I'm sorry?
Where are you reading in the letter? In what paragraph?
Uh, the first paragraph.
Okay.
Uh, today's letter.
I'd like to, I'd like to go down to the bottom part of this, this letter, because my understanding was you were to come back here with a, a plan for stormwater management would, which would alleviate any potential additional runoff issue. It wasn't our township's engineer's job to do that, that's what he's telling you. Our township engineer doesn't do your site plan, okay? We had requested that you have a professional provide a stormwater management plan. This letter also says that. You have not done that and you still don't have that, is that correct?
No. Check the previous record, that wasn't the case.
That's what you need to do if we're gonna, in my opinion, I would have to have that to see that, if somebody says you have a plan in place that would mitigate stormwater runoff from a professional engineer. You went to the town engineer and he basically said, that's not his job to write that report for you. I agree with him, but it is your job to have to have a professional testify to us that what you're planning to do ain't gonna cause or exacerbate the problem. If you can't provide that, we can't, I can't vote for the approval.
And Dave, I think you're right, but if you read this, the third paragraph...
Yeah.
It seems as though they think he wants another two thousand.
No, that wasn't in the application, that's why the big misunderstanding.
There may be some confusion there.
Right, it's still, it's still Davey's, right. Right.
Engineering department wants a stormwater management plan, well, actually zoning board presumably wants a stormwater.
Do you understand that?
I understand what you're saying, sir, here now, but that wasn't what the conclusion of a last hearing.
Let's put it this way, we're all focused on it now, that's where we are.
Okay, good, that's great. And also, I just want to...
Are we talking about things that are already there?
Mm-hmm.
So you're not asking to add anything to what's already there?
No, I'm not asking you. This, this expansion was done on, on twenty fifteen, it's, which is in the letter saying, you know, existing unpermitted patio expansion, that was done in twenty fifteen. Uh, there's no request for new additional...
Well, no, the, the, the twenty fifteen expansion was two thousand square feet, uh, two thousand feet, correct?
Uh, less than that.
That, well, that's what they're alleging, it was two, two thousand feet. So now they're asking you to get an engineer to discuss where that water, that additional water is gonna run off to, because there's, I think allegations that your next door neighbor was getting water infiltration, uh, through the property. There was a fence behind your property, if I remember, between the property. In any event, you need that for the board to, to, to approve this, they need to see that it's not gonna create any problem.
Or it hasn't created a problem.
The last hearing has required the town engineer. I received the letter today...
Yes, sir.
Saying, you know, that's not his job, okay?
So then I guess you can request that this matter be carried, but you have to give, um, any type of, um, you know, you, you can have it carried without notice.
I agree.
But you have to, but you're gonna have to give, um, you know, waivers for, uh, the, the time.
I agree. And also, Mr. Nihoff also suggests, you know, based on what we met, he's saying, you know, he, he could get, he's suggesting get advice from the landscaper to see what's the, you know, the, about the drainage.
That's not what the board is asking for. You need an engineer to say that the water is going to be held on your property. A landscaper is not an engineer.
But ask for extensions.
He may have practical knowledge, but he is not an engineer.
But if there is the water drainage problems that need to be resolved by, I guess, by the landscapers, by...
No, the engineer is gonna design a system. We may have to put dry wells in your property or maybe swales, I don't know what it's gonna be. Cause I have no clue how much water the engineer is gonna say is coming from this expansion. Once he determines that, then he's gonna have a place to put it and it's not in your neighbor's backyard.
And am I right by saying the pictures indicate that the addition goes right to the property line?
No, there's a six inch between the...
How, how much?
A six inch.
That's, that's right next to the property line.
Okay.
So...
Right, again, I'm just...
Right now, you have, you're here because you had a violation filed against you, correct? And there's a complaint that what you did caused extra water, okay? What we're suggesting here to alleviate or to mitigate the situation for you and your neighbors is you need to have a professional give a plan that will mitigate that, okay? It'll be satisfactorily completed, so that whatever you have done, if his finding is true that what you did in fact increased the water flow and caused puddling, you need to take care of that, okay?
Okay, so what do I need to prepare for the next one?
I'm sorry?
What do I need to prepare for the, you know, for the next one?
You need an engineer to tell you how to get rid of the water on your property, not sending it to your neighbor's property. An engineer will tell, come up with a plan like Mr. Chadwick said, how to get the water into the ground without going to your neighbors. Or out to a drain. Or to a drain or somewhere, but certainly not to your neighbors.
Out to a sewer, whatever.
My neighbor's land also lower than mine.
That, that might or might not be true, but what the board is telling you is you need to go get an engineer to come up with a plan to alleviate the water issue that you created.
Okay, got it.
Would you like to carry this?
Carry, what that mean?
So would you like time so you can...
Time to get an engineer.
Yes, I do, because I've been told twice, from October twenty-third until December eighteen...
We understand, we heard that.
We're told that was towns gonna have engineer and this is the first...
Okay.
You know, even though the first letter dated nineteen.
Sorry about that misunderstanding.
You know, we're, we're gonna need ex...
Need you to, to grant an extension of time for us to make a decision.
Yes, sure.
Okay?
Yep, okay.
And then, uh, just one second, um, and you're gonna, so you, you understand you have to hire a...
A civil engineer or engineer who...
Somebody, somebody who's...
Is it, is this civil engineer in charge of this area?
The key term is storm management, somebody to...
So is that storm management? Okay. Okay.
Most engineers are.
Water, water management plan, okay?
That belongs to civil engineer? That's...
Yes, civil engineer is correct.
Okay.
So you want, if there's anyone here for this application?
Yeah.
This, this application is gonna be carried to another date?
Well, we've already been here three times and we haven't had a chance to even share just a little bit of what our opinion is. It's not really fair.
Well, the way the procedure is, is he presents...
We have the opportunity to share our opinion so that the board understands our opinion, that's all.
Well, we understand that there's some kind of a problem with the water and we're trying to get an answer from a professional as to how, hopefully to handle it.
Well, the thing is, is that his property is higher because they built it up higher, whether he did it or the people who bought the house from, and then it was covered, uh, the whole backyard is covered, plus he had been pumping out his pool onto his property, which caused, we couldn't figure out where the water was coming.
I, I understand that, but...
But the engineer might come in and say that what he did is wrong no matter what, so might not even get to you, he might not have an engineer that could fix the problem he has without cutting back. The, the way, the way the, excuse me, the way, the way the process works is it's his application, he has to give proof to this board, uh, for the relief that he wants. He has to give sufficient proof so the relief can either be granted, and if it's not, if he doesn't give that proof, then the board could deny it. The way it works, it's like a trial, he gets to testify, then the chairman will open it up to you to ask him questions. Um, after he's put his proof in, which would be an expert, the engineer, his, any, any of his factual proof, then you'll have a chance to provide testimony against the application if you still think it's, it's problematic. But he hasn't even given that testimony yet.
Well, we've been back three times. The last time, um, the, the, the code enforcement officer and the town engineer was supposed to be here because what he has here now violates the town ordinance and...
That's why he's here.
Okay, so that's, that's what we, we expected to hear here was a professional engineer and a code enforcement officer, uh, be on the, the town side and to, and he, the both of them, yeah, I haven't spoken to them, but these two gentlemen have, and they've been out to, to look at our properties and how they flooded and how that...
Yes, and, and they're not, and they're not here, so that's why we're gonna carry this.
Why?
We, well, we, this is, this is the zoning board, the zoning board's attorney is, uh, the zoning board's engineer is down there, I'm the attorney, this is the planner. So all the professionals here for the zoning board, we're here. The town, um, engineer and the town's planner are, are different.
Can you guys, what do they do?
We can't order them, no, we can ask them and they probably didn't come because they just sent a memo dated, um, March fourth...
Today.
Today, saying that we're not, we, we can't do anything until he gets an engineer and that engineer provides a drainage plan.
Was, was the enforcement of the officer ever asked to be here?
Yes, but he, he has a second job, he works nights.
Okay.
He's working tonight. I mean, these are pictures of puddles of water on the ground.
So, so to your point, you know, this, this matter is gonna be carried at a date, you'll get notice, if you could give, if the three of you can give your name to, uh, the secretary, you, you'll get a notice when this is gonna be rescheduled. At that time, hopefully the applicant has his engineer, and we can request that the town engineer be here as well. But we have our own engineer who is talking to, uh, the town's professionals.
What on that day do we all, we cannot negotiate? What's gonna happen?
Then unfortunately, you, you won't be here. Try to make it on that date.
We are gonna have a tough pick time, there's no resolution, and what, we couldn't make it on the fourth time.
So may, may I try something here? You're, you're, it's clear you're opposed to what's happening, you believe his addition or whatever did cause water problems to your property. That's, that's pretty clear, that's what your belief is, right? Okay, so what we're asking him to do is have an expert say, uh, that that isn't the case, and if it is the case, to solve it with a mitigation plan, okay? Then you're gonna say, okay, if he gets a mitigation plan, that, then you'll be happy, right? Or you're gonna have to get an expert to testify against his expert, okay? That's how this whole process works, alright?
Well, we kind of expected the town to honor its ordinance.
The town is honoring its ordinance, that's why you're here. That's why he's in violation, why you're here.
So is there a motion? Do you want to ask for a motion to carry?
Well, I wanna make one.
We are representing all parties important here, he's a resident also of the town.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Wang's a resident of the town also, we represent all town. We have no preference here whatsoever.
I have a suggestion.
The engineer can't take sides either. He can give his opinion, and like you said, it's not his idea to write the plan.
May I, may I make a suggestion, Mr. Wang?
Yes.
You're gonna hire a civil engineer to come out and look at the situation?
Sure, yes, that's the decision, yes.
I would suggest that if you could get a, maybe an email address from one or more of these gentlemen, and let them know when the engineer's gonna be there, then they can be there when the engineer's there, so you can ask him questions.
Well, my question is, if I'm paying the hired engineer to look at my property, why do I need to ask their opinion?
I need their opinion, just giving them a chance to- You don't have to do it, you, you could do whatever you want.
Then our board engineer will go through-
I'm just making a suggestion for-
I'm still, sir, but-
But, but isn't that, but we're just addressing that one issue. There might be an issue with setbacks. The, the surface goes up to six inches from the property line. That might be an issue separate from the water drainage issue.
Patio is a, don't-
They don't have a setback at all?
Not regulated.
Okay.
Sticks.
What's that?
Quite frankly, you can't, you can't speak right now because you have to come here. Um, we, we, I think the chairman is to let you talk from the audience, but technically you're not supposed to do that.
That, I, I think that's the reason we need to hire a professional engineer. Okay, this people only taking, you know, worry about taking sides, not taking sides. That's why there's a professional in this world. As I truly believe, that's why I agree with the board, hiring engineer, I would have hired- I wouldn't have hired an engineer before i- if the board wasn't decided.
So you're gonna, you're gonna have a chance to do that?
We can't change the case.
No, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm just-
How much time do you need to do all these things?
Oh, I never get, had experience to hire engineers, so I don't know what their schedule is. So I will need some, some time, too, I'm, I'm sure that's costly.
But remember, his patio is there.
I know.
They have more recourse.
Nor, Norwood, do you have any time?
The soonest is April twenty-second.
April, April twenty-second, April twenty-second?
I will try, I don't know if I-
I don't think you'll get it done by then.
Okay, the following meeting is May sixth.
Let's try May sixth.
May sixth?
Yeah, I try to make it done. I don't want this, I want my neighbor to be happy.
Okay?
I, I'm not here to be anybody's enemy. Uh, by the way, this neighbor's never met in my life, so I don't know where the hatred from, but maybe that is. Um, I have a last question, which is since, you know, here, 'cause I'm, I'm hitting the deadline. I, I received a letter from, from the town dated November twenty-second saying-
Do we have that in our files?
What? I'm sorry.
Do we have that in our files?
Uh, this is an invoice for the last hearing.
Yes, that was sent from me.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's a charge against your escrow account for services from whichever one of our professionals.
That was charged for the last hearing, but last hearing, last hearing was, was not-
They reviewed for the hearing and they prepared for the hearing.
Okay, but the two things which is supposedly happened last hearing wasn't exist.
So, but that's why-
That's why I'm questioning, is I being charged? I, I'm not, I'm just saying, that's all.
Yes, sir, as everybody else is talking.
You gotta cut this off.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Motion to carry?
Yeah. Motion to carry?
I have a motion to carry this.
So moved.
Second, Jusqu'Wit.
All fair.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, this matter-
Let me make it clear to Mr. Wang what that means, to carry now.
It's, it's, it's carried with all extensions granted.
Thank you.
Correct, all extensions are granted.
Sure, I will have the report ready by that day.
That's what you need to do.
Yes.
That's it.
Thank you. Am I done?
The next one is application, uh, nineteen sixty-four.
I know, I'm on the line. Alright, so the next application is Mountain Club condominium association.
Application nineteen sixty-four.
Is anybody here on that? I didn't see anyone.
No, Nora?
Nora?
I apologize. May sixth.
Nora?
That was my next question.
What is yours?
On application nineteen sixty-four-
The Mountain Club Association.
No one's here.
Next one then.
Next one.
Forge Pond Developers.
I have to recuse myself.
Why are you smiling? So it's application nineteen sixty-five, uh, Forge Pond Developers, Old Dover Road, block fourteen, lot twelve point oh-one.
Well, before we get to that, we were supposed to do something with, uh, who's lost it again? Mr. Mateo? Nora, did you ever get, hear from Mr. Mateo?
I spoke with him today, his application, he's going to notice, it's, uh, April twenty-second. He, um, something about his child and it slipped his mind.
So, so he asked for an adjournment?
Yes.
And did he give all extensions?
I'm going to, uh, when I send him a new notice, he's going to notice everybody. Uh, I'll put something in the mail for him to-
So it was never really scheduled for tonight anyhow, it wasn't on the agenda?
It, it was not only to make, announce another date, which I spoke with him about today.
Great.
Alright, so, Mateo application nineteen colon seven, seven. I know there were objectives here on that, that's why.
There was one last week for that application.
Just ahead.
So.
I hope I'll be-
Uh, Mr. Chairman and, and counsel, on the mountain club, we, they're not here, so what do we do? Do we, don't we need to vote to carry or dismiss or do something?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're either gonna dismiss it without prejudice or, um, carry, what's our timeframe?
Is there an attorney on that case?
Let me see on that one, they, uh-
I don't think you want to dismiss it. There's not a chance to look at, that wall needs to be fixed. So it's out again.
We don't run into a problem with it.
I know they noticed, we had somebody come in and look at their application yesterday. What the heck is it?
How long does it take?
You know what? They never sent me notice. They never sent me, uh, their notice. So I did have somebody come in yesterday because they received notice.
They never sent you the proof.
Huh?
They never sent you the proof.
Right.
So it was, it was officially, um, scheduled? Because they never provided notice? Well, you scheduled it, they never officially, they didn't have proof of mailing, they never provided that.
They did not provide it to me.
Somebody did come in saying, you know. Now we just move it to another date?
Find out if anybody's out there for it.
Anybody here on the mountain club matter? I see no responses.
So I'll make a motion to carry the next available date, which is-
You wanna give us-
April twenty-second.
And is that, and you'll, you'll call them up and they'll give all extensions?
Absolutely.
Alright, name it.
And we have time, is that correct?
So have a motion to carry date for twenty-second?
Yes, so moved.
Second?
Yeah, motion made by Gary and second lady.
Timing of-
Who's it, ninety?
April twenty-second.
They submitted November twenty-second and were deemed complete December nineteenth.
Yeah, so we're within time.
This is a C, Barry. Isn't it?
Yes.
It's a C.
Yeah, so you only get days.
It's a hundred and twenty days, right?
Yeah, hundred and twenty.
That's the use. This is ninety, oh wait, not even seven.
It's any variant.
We're okay moving to table five?
All in favor of April twenty-second?
So moved.
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
Sorry for the delay, Mr. Wang.
Oh, that's quite all right, thank you. Uh, Joseph O'Neill for the applicant, we're here on a, kind of a return visit. This was last heard by the board back in July of twenty eighteen, when the board granted approval for the, uh, townhomes that are on the lot, you've seen the plans. We've submitted what we're here for this evening. As part of that application is a subdivision to put each of those townhomes on their own individual lots. I have with me a number of witnesses, but I, what I'd like to do is start out with Mr. Carlback, uh, to run through the application and the proofs for the application. And if anyone has any questions of the engineer, the surveyor, or the architect, I have everybody with me tonight. Uh, if that's what the board wants to hear, but without further ado, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Carlback.
Raise your right hand, you swear a firm testimony about the good before the board's true self you got?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
David Carlback, K-A-R-L-E-B-A-C-H.
And your testimony tonight will be in regard to?
Uh, professional planning.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes.
And you provide testimony before this board, not the boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, you swear, and welcome.
Good, Mr. Carlback, you're, uh, familiar with the, uh, application that's before the board?
Uh, yes, I am.
You've had an opportunity to examine the local ordinances and master plan?
Yes, I have.
I wonder if you can go ahead and compare this application to those documents and give us your findings?
Certainly, first I'd like to talk a little bit about the site. Um, this is a one point two acre site, it's currently vacant, vacant and wooded. Uh, it was approved in two thousand eighteen for a twelve unit townhouse development as part of the greater Mountain Way development. It's actually an appendage of that, uh, development. Mountain Way was approved in two thousand sixteen for a hundred units. Uh, I believe it was a hundred units, plus or minus. Um, and the construction is substantially underway. A lot of the roadways are cut through, and I've noticed they've, uh, poured some of the foundations. So, uh, construction has begun on, on Mountain Way. Uh, the dominant land use in this area actually is a combination of single-family and multifamily homes. If you go, uh, I guess southwest of this site, you'll find, uh, Glenmont Commons, that's adjacent to the site. Uh, those are townhomes, of course, and that's a substantial, uh, development. In terms of this plan, there's no physical changes to the approved plan. Everything stays exactly as it appears on the approved plan. The only difference is the subdivision that would allow for the fee simple ownership of the, uh, units, of the actual townhome units. Uh, and Mountain Way received the very same approvals for fee simple, uh, that this applicant now currently seeks. So you can see, uh, because the subdivision lines, uh, now, uh, cut physically through the, the middle of these, uh, townhome units, a number of variances are created. Those variants are summarized on a plan. It's a subdivision plan, uh, prepared by MCB dated November fourth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, and there's a table in the lower right-hand corner which summarizes all the variances that were sought. Again, very similar to the Mountain Way development. Now, this property is located in the RR zone. Uh, there's no change in zoning since the two thousand eighteen, uh, approval. Uh, there's no change in the use and density, uh, or other relief is granted as part of the two thousand eighteen approval, with the exception of that variance that's created by those new, uh, subdivision lines is summarized, uh, in the table. So again, the relief is, is technical in nature, uh, there's the setbacks, the coverage, um, all is summarized in the table. And this is the very same relief that was granted for the much larger Mountain Way development. So now I'd just like to talk a little bit about the, uh, basis for the granting of the relief. Uh, all relief is justifiable under the C two or the flexible C balancing test. And that is, uh, no, there's no hardship complained of. Instead, it's a, uh, balancing of the benefits versus the burdens. And I believe the benefits of the application, uh, substantially outweigh the detriment. As the board knows, uh, we're not only examining the benefits that arise from the variance that's being sought, or the variances that are being sought, but we're allowed to look at the, uh, the overall context of the project, the entirety of it, and talk about the benefits that arise from the overall development. So the benefits, of course, are that fee simple, uh, gives each unit better control over the physical space around it. Uh, the project itself remains intact, and all of the prior cited benefits carry forth, uh, as was explained by Mr. McDonough, uh, back when this project was originally approved. All those same benefits carry forward. Uh, the project continues to promote the purposes of the land use law, uh, namely, purposes A, G, I, and M of the land use law. In terms of the detriments, there are no detriments. Fee simple, uh, ownership and facts makes this piece more consistent with the rest of the Mountain Way development. The deviations are imperceptible, uh, in the real world. The development looked exactly, uh, as it was planned and approved back in two thousand eighteen. Okay, you're not gonna walk down the, uh, the court and notice any of the subdivision lines, and that's really the only difference, are those, uh, lines. Uh, regulation by ownership has no bearing from a zoning perspective. The use, the density, and every other aspect of the previously approved plan remains intact. So really, this relief in my mind is a, a very, very technical nature. So I'll conclude by saying, saying the statutory criteria for the granting of all relief, uh, are met, and I believe approval is warranted.
Thank you, Mr. Carlback, I have no further questions for this witness.
Any members of the board have any questions?
There's so many, why are you here?
I'm sorry.
There's so many, why are you here? I'm, I'm a little confused.
Well, it's, it's really just, uh, based on the type of ownership, is really, it's, you know, fee simple versus a condominium form of ownership, and that's about it. The physical attributes of the plan remain the same.
It creates about, it creates ninety-eight variances, just adding up the list on the plan.
Right, which would make a great deal of sense, because as you put the property lines through the middle of these buildings, you're gonna have setback, uh, variances everywhere.
It is more of a, like, a technical kind of thing?
It's just like the Mountain Way development, you know, it's really the same.
Technical requirements.
Can I ask a couple questions? Who's gonna own the street?
Well, we discussed that in the original application, and the, the intention was to eventually turn it over to the town.
That's what, then you've got it shown as a lot. Right now. Who's gonna own the detention base?
I believe that's the developer, who testified.
That'll be the orders association.
Yes.
I don't recall discussing this project with the jurisdiction of the street. You and I talked about it, 'cause I called you on it.
Maybe I'm just remembering it then, Mr. Chadwick, but, uh, that was my impression from the prior application that the street was to be turned over to the town.
The street?
Yes.
The whole project was one condo. Job. Didn't have any lot lines.
Because I thought the street did, Mr. Chadwick. I'll have, I can check that very quickly.
The only-
Hi, can you help me out?
It's unclear on the map who, whose it is. That's for sure. Dave, I know what I'm talking about?
Okay, yeah. Mr. Chadwick, I'm being told on the plan that the, uh, that the lot assignment that's in the middle of the street is the old lot assignment from the prior plan. The entire intention, even in the original application, was that was a right-of-way, not a separate lot.
So the street was a private street on the prior proof?
It was a right-of-way, yes.
That's not what I said.
Well, as I indicated before, I thought it was supposed to be turned over to the town.
What does Mr. McClellan think it was?
Mr. Mc, Mr. McClellan? Uh, yes, you're- Uh, yes, you're being asked a question, so...
Raise your right hand. You swear a firm testimony you got to give to the board's true self you got?
I do.
And for the record, state your name?
Patrick McClellan.
And you've been sworn before, before this board and also on this application prior?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chadwick, my recollection is the same as Mr. O'Neil's, that, uh, through the testimony of the site plan application that I lead indicated an intention for the township to take ownership of the right-of-way.
Okay. So those are supposed to be homeowners association?
Yeah.
There is still supposed to be a homeowners association, and that would control the other common elements that are not part of the, uh, the plan. There's a, there's a surrounding area, there's an detention basin, uh, so these would be part of that homeowners.
There's a strip of land outside the lots.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
That, that the association will go to take care of the grass and bushes and whatever they've got over there.
Exactly.
As well as the, uh, stormwater stuff.
So...
And that's no change from the original application back in 2018 either.
So whose responsibility is to maintain the detention basin?
That would be the homeowners association.
That has nothing to do with this application.
It's unchanged from the prior application.
Have you received the engineer's letter and you have any questions?
I did. I was negligent. I should've mentioned that we accept all the comments in the engineering and planning report. We're discussing the one point, um, Chadwick brought up in the planning report, but as far as the engineering report, we'll make all those changes.
And I just talked with the township engineer's office, and they wanted to make sure that the basins were not going to be turned over to the town, so...
As they did back in 2018.
Okay.
I did do a report on this December 31st. It's dated, probably you guys have a copy. The only thing I wanna comment further is, this plan was approved, uh, essentially granted the number of units well before the township adopted its affordable housing regulations. So, unfortunately, fortunately, whichever way you wanna say it, it's not required.
Okay. You have anything else, Mr. Wang?
Uh, I, my witnesses are available if there are any other questions. Otherwise, I would rely on, uh, the testimony that we've provided and ask the board to approve this.
Any board member, any other board members have a question?
Is there a concern that the road is being turned over to the town?
No.
Okay.
No, we did the other one, but I, I, the paperwork I had in my office, and I'll be kidding, I don't keep everything in years to years. Uh, I couldn't tell. I couldn't run your illusion.
If I may comment, the reason I remember that we were talking about turning it over, there was a question at the, uh, at the board level about our intention to turn it over to the town, and I remember having to do a dissertation about the fact that it really doesn't matter what a developer intends for a roadway. Only the town council can take jurisdiction over a road. So we can ask the town to do it, but there are plenty of roads, private roads in town, that people intended to turn over to the town that never got turned over. There's, there was even a case, uh, down the road here where somebody sued the town to take over a road and, of course, lost that lawsuit.
It's not by the psychiatric...
Yes, exactly correct.
It's a moot point possibly, but in, in your, in your presentation, you attached eight photos of different lots or whatever, and they're not, can tell, why are they attached here? What revel, relevance do they have to what we're supposed to be thinking about here tonight? Why, why, why do we have these pictures?
Those photos, Mr. McClellan, is asked, the question is, why are their photos?
Quite likely...
You gotta talk into the mic. You're not the prior application.
The photographs are provided. They're checklist item, and it seems silly to ask for a waiver, so we, we went out, took some pictures, and, uh, since it's a fairly small application, we felt it convenient to just put them right on the plan.
So these eight shots are of the, of the, what am I looking at? I'm looking at trees and a little snow and a nice flat lake.
That's what you look at, and, and there's, there's photo location and orientation circles on the plan itself, the orientation. They all illustrate the point that it's a vacant property.
Yeah, that's my question. I have a few trees on.
There's a few trees on.
And all those trees have been gone.
Questions, if you talk again from the other day.
Nevermind.
Any members of the public have any questions of these experts who testified? See none? Anybody from the public wish to speak in opposition to this matter? In favor of this matter? I see none.
I just thank the board for its time and rely on the applications, uh, submitted. Uh, there's really no visible changes. It's just the drawing of lines. Thank you.
Uh, do we need to go to conference?
No.
No. So any, any recommendation or proposal?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I am in favor of this application since it is a technical aspect, not the major differences between the, as of, uh, approved plan. So I'm in favor of this.
Alright, so they wanna make a motion? What are you tapping me for, make a motion?
You wanna make a, Mr. Adam?
I got it, sure. Application number 1965, Forge Pond Developers, uh, Old Dover Road, block 14, lots 12.01, in the RR zone. I recommend that we amend the preliminary and finer, final major subdivision, grant the C variants, um, for the 12-lot subdivision.
Second, I do.
I said that correctly.
Good enough.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have, I need you to call the...
Road call.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
Mr. Perick?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Mr. Willens?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
You too, same.
You got any other business?
You got homeowners?
No other business.
Would you like to adjourn?
No, so moved.
We have concerns.
I always think I just want to... And I always...
I've always done that.
Oh, that thing, what is that?
Yeah. Uh, I think I did look at yours and it was all good. The event. You're welcome. I was happy to help you.